Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible tragedy. This video covers the testimony given at the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing into the tragedy by ex-Ocean Gate employee Matthew McCoy. And this is one I've been eager to cover as clips from it were featured in the recent Netflix documentary about Titan. And those clips alone promised an unfiltered account of Ocean Gate and in particular Stockton Rush. In this testimony, we hear about Mr. McCoy's employment history, including a lengthy period at the Coast Guard, before eventually after moving to Washington, getting a job at Ocean Gate. I won't say too much for now, but we'll of course be back again at the end. Though just a few other topics and people covered include David Lockridge, Tony Nissen, Renata Rojas, the Andrea Doria dive, the level of experience or lack thereof on the Ocean Gate team, Stockton Rush's temper, as well as the concerns Mr. McCoy had whilst he was at the company, which he voiced to Stockton Rush, and I'm sure you can imagine just how well that went. Anyway, thank you for clicking on this video. It is greatly appreciated. Now let's hear the testimony given by Matthew McCoy.
Good morning, Mr. McCoy.
Good morning.
Thank you for making the trip today despite the weather conditions. We appreciate it. As we start out, I'd like to start with you providing your work history and background that would be applicable to your testimony today, sir.
My work history starts out, I was an active duty member of the U.S. Coast Guard from 2002 to 2015. During that time period, I was, I started out on the Coast Guard Cutter spar in Kodiak Alaska as a seaman. I attended machinery technician A school in 2003, was stationed onboard the Coast Guard Cutter Eagle for three and a half years. Part of the auxiliary division, 2004 to 2007. And 2007 to 2010, I was stationed at Coast Guard Station Kauai, where I became a boarding officer and I served for a short time as the law enforcement petty officer for the station. And then from there, I went to, I was stationed up in Washington State at the Maritime Force Protection Unit Banger from 2010 to 2012, where we conducted force protection, security zone escorts for the submarine, the naval submarine station there. And then after that, I went to the Coast Guard Cutter Monroe in Kodiak Alaska. And I was a member of the propulsion division from 2012 to 2015. And then at that point in time, I went into the, I left active duty and I went into the Coast Guard Reserve. From there, I moved to Oregon and I worked a couple of different jobs. I worked for Mutual Materials as a shift lead at their production facility while I was taking some college classes down there. Ended up taking a job and moving to, back to Spokane, which is where I grew up. And worked for a company called Bayford Solutions. I believe that they've been consolidated with another company. And did a remote contract technical writing, developing maintenance procedure cards for the Coast Guard for the small boat product line. And then moved from there with my fiancee to Kenmore, Washington, and started taking classes there at one of the local community colleges. While I was doing that, that was the beginning of 2017, I was doing that, I saw a job posting for the operations technician with Ocean Gate. Sounded kind of interesting, so I inquired and ended up taking the job in, after that spring term. So that was in April of 2017.
Okay, and I'm gonna stop you there for a second, sir. Before we get into your time at Ocean Gate, can you provide some more background on your Coast Guard duties? Specifically in regard to the boarding officer duties you had mentioned?
Right, so I went to boarding officer school in 2009. And 2000, and before that, I was a boarding team member out in Kauai. One of the things that we dealt with in Kauai specifically a lot was recreational, or I'm sorry, not recreational, but passenger vessels for hire. There was, there's a large number of tour boats that operate on the island. So we had a lot of those vessels operating. Most of them were inspected. Sometime around 2009, 2010, the Coast Guard placed a marine inspector over on Kauai full-time. Before that, they were operating out of the Honolulu office and he would come over and do his inspections. So he was co-located at our, at our building there. And we were able to work with him. It was actually pretty useful having a marine inspector on site because he knew all the vessels. There's a lot of people operating outside of their, the specified areas on their COIs. So he started, actually, we were being directed to actually board certified passenger vessels, which is not very common for, at a station level, to be going out and doing enforcement actions on them. Also had the opportunity to board and terminate a couple voyages of people that were operating basically beyond a six-pack. So they, they were carrying more than six passengers for hire. And it became very clear that they were trying to specifically circumvent the rules. We had one case where a gentleman had a 100-ton license, but his vessel wasn't inspected. And what he had set up with the, some of the local, not Airbnbs, but the condos that people would come out and rent, is that he was, he was receiving compensation directly from the condos. And people were getting these tours as part of their rental fees. So it was included in an entire package, but he was still receiving compensation for it. I know that that was passed over, I think, to the sector and they ended up, I don't know what exactly happened. I believe administratively, he ended up losing his 100-ton license out of that process. And so I'd had some experience dealing with both passenger vessels, as well as people trying to circumvent the rules regarding operating for hire.
Thank you, sir. And just one note, you're speaking a little fast. I want to make sure for the record that we get the, your transcript right. I want to go back to your time at MST Kauai or Station Kauai?
I was at the station, yes.
And you said you met with a marine inspector from Sector Honolulu?
Yeah, so they had, the sector created a billet over there and they, I believe that it was established as a marine safety detachment. It was a single inspector. There was, because he just focused on doing the COIs for all of the tour boats that were operating on the island. And he got to the point where he was spending enough time on island every month that they justified it. So it was, I believe it was actually established as Marine Safety Detachment Kauai, but I would have to, I'm not sure.
Do you remember what year that was, sir?
Probably 2008.
Do you remember the name of the inspector?
Not off the top of my head.
Could it have been, for your memory, Chief One Officer Dennis Cholwell?
That does sound correct.
Just for the record, at that 2008, I was a prevention chief in Sector Honolulu overseeing that unit.
Okay, yeah.
Can you provide some details on the training you received regarding how to enforce passenger vessel operations?
So one of the biggest things that we looked at was that the, the COIs, so on the island of Kauai, there's not very many ports for these vessels to operate out of. As a station, we were limited ourselves because there's not very many places for the boats to moor up and operate out of. So basically on the south side of the island, we had Port Allen. And then on the north side of the island, they were operating out of one of the harbors up there. And then there was, there was a couple of other small boat ramps around the island. So everybody, the, the COIs there on the island were very restrictive for the areas of operations that they were allowed to operate out of. So it specified what port that they were allowed to go out of, as well as the area of operations. So when you went out to the, the Nepali coast is the most common tour area that, that the vessels operated out of because there is not good radio communications out there and the, the sea state could rapidly change from side to side of the island. I think that the, the COIs were pretty restrictive based off of where that they were going to be operating. So they weren't allowed, I don't think anybody had a COI to operate tours around the entirety of the island. They were restricted to the Nepali coast and it would say specifically that they could operate out of, say, like Port Allen. So if they were in the summertime, wanted to go and operate out of, and it's slipping my mind, there's a very small boat ramp on the north side of the island, completely surrounded by a reef, had no Coast Guard markings to it whatsoever. It was used by locals. They had PVC pipe in the reef. And if you didn't know what side to go on or anything like that, it could be pretty dangerous. We never operated out of it as a station because it wasn't an officially marked entrance going in and out of there. So I don't think anybody had a COI that said that they could operate out of that, a certificate of inspection to say that they could operate out of that port. So a lot of it had to do with that, was where they were operating at and then obviously the number of passengers that they were carrying.
And sir, you, you mentioned during your initial statement that you had left active duty in 2015 with the Coast Guard?
That's correct.
Can you explain your relationship with the Coast Guard following that date?
Yeah, so I, I went into the Coast Guard Reserve at that point in time and I drilled at the Base Seattle, attached to the Naval Engineering Support Unit there, which I believe has been renamed. And I drilled there for three years from 2015 to 2018. And then in 2018, I went back on active duty orders for about three and a half years and worked for Coast Guard Recruiting Command. And then after that ended, I moved to, my family and I moved to North Carolina, not, not related to the Coast Guard. And I remain in the Coast Guard Reserve today.
Are your duties today involved with law enforcement or is it more a different?
So I was today, so I was attached to the Coast Guard Station at Elizabeth City. And then I've since recently moved to Florida for a civilian job. And I am attached, I recently became attached to Coast Guard Station Panama City. And it's just boat crew duties. I don't do any law enforcement duties there.
Thank you. Now I'd like to go to your time beginning at Ocean Gate and your experiences there, sir.
Yes, sir. So I took the job at Ocean Gate and I believe it was April of 2017 is when I began. And I initially, when I took the job and I took the interview, it was made very clear that they were working with the University of Washington, the Applied Physics Lab and Boeing. So they, they had a lot of what sounded like legitimacy behind them as far as the engineering. I was made aware of the, the concept of creating a carbon fiber, kind of a new design and the goal for going to the Titanic. And then I also had met during that time with, with David Lockridge. He had a lot of credibility behind him and his experience. I had zero experience with any sort of underwater vehicle at that time. But I was hired on mainly to help with surface support operations, small boat maintenance, things like that. So that's the main reason why I ended up taking the job at the time. And then, you know, I'd been given kind of a, I did about like a trial week or so, I think, with him before I ended up accepting the job. So I was able to kind of see a lot of what initially was going on. And in April of 2017, things to be, seemed to be pretty well run in order there. I ended up, during my time there, I learned that the company had basically broken ties with the Applied Physics Lab at the University of Washington, which was concerning. And the explanation for it wasn't very clear as to why, other than that there was some disagreements. So that, you know, that was my first kind of alarm bell, I think, in the back of my head, something didn't seem right. The next one was that Boeing wasn't going to be doing the layup for the carbon fiber, that it was going to be a different company down in California. At the time, I didn't know that it was who it was. Until I think we got the video and they had hours and hours of video of this thing being laid up. And I remember looking at it and it looked like it was just being laid up in a dirty warehouse down in California, which was also concerning. Turned out to be, I believe that was Spencer Composites. Didn't look anything like what I would have expected to see at a Boeing facility. And then the next, one of my concerns in, in that process was when it arrived, the, we had been told, and when I started, that it was going to be a seven-inch thick hole. And it showed up and it was five inches thick. It was just information that they weren't openly sharing with staff and employees. And so there was a lot of questions just among those of us who are not, you know, in the engineering department as to why did the plan change and things like that. And there was no very clear answers.
And sir, I just want to clarify a few things for the record here. We are talking about at this time, the first Titan hole.
Correct, yeah.
And your position was in the operations department. Who was your supervisor?
Scott Griffith. So I worked directly for Scott Griffith. He, at the time, in my understanding, was the director of all like the service operations. But he seemed to have a level of authority over David Lockridge at the time as well.
Was David Lockridge in your chain of command?
I would say not directly.
Was there a reason that in the operations department, that as a non-engineer, you were taking an interest in the development of the submersible?
I think just in my experience as, as a machinery technician in the Coast Guard, as an engineer in the Coast Guard, anytime that you, you see anything that is out of the ordinary, you have to start asking some questions and making sure that you understand why you're doing what you're doing. I don't think that there is a qualification that I received while in the Coast Guard that didn't involve a thorough amount of knowledge and understanding of what you're dealing with. So there was, I had had the conversation with him, them about going through and becoming a sub-pilot at some point in time. So that was one of my concerns as well, was for the, the design of this overall and for its safety.
Okay, please continue.
Sure. So during the, my time there, and I'm not sure exactly when it, it dawned on me, but the business model didn't start to make sense to me. It didn't, we didn't have an income stream. We didn't have, you know, the understanding of how it was. So initially, they had kind of laid it out that there was this Coast Guard Foundation and that it was going to fund through its fundraising efforts would fund kind of a scientific mission behind Ocean Gate. So that was my initial understanding of how the, that process was going to work, is that they were, they would be raising money and then funding various oceanographic type expeditions.
Objection, Mr. McCoy. Did you say Coast Guard Foundation? I just wanted...
The Ocean Gate.
Ocean Gate Foundation.
So just for the record, the Coast Guard has a foundation. I think you may have...
Did I?
Said Coast Guard, but to clarify, is the Ocean Gate Foundation?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the, the Ocean Gate Foundation would be funding research. The Coast Guard Foundation had nothing to do with it. I'm sorry about that. And the, sorry, lost my train of thought there. So the, the, that's how kind of the business model would work. And that it was going to be mainly for scientific, making the oceans more accessible to researchers and stuff that didn't have these large grants and, and other access to, to large amounts of capital to be able to lease out subs and do kind of what I think, I listened to some of the testimony, it's kind of been laid out before, the, the cost and expense of, of operating research vessels and stuff like that for oceanographic research. So at some point in time, and I don't remember what month it was, but, so the company had, had gotten hold of a new, a new vessel for towing. They'd bought it, I think, from the government through GSA auctions. And so it was a former Coast Guard boat. And so I had experience maintaining and operating that. So I believe it, I can't remember her last name, Renata, I believe she testified before. She had come out and I'm not sure what the purpose of her trip was. But I ended up taking her and Joel Perry, they went scuba diving. Down, there's an underwater dive park, I don't remember what it's called, near Edmonds, Washington. And they had been diving down there. So during that process, I had learned of her experience with Ocean Gate and that she had been on the Andrea Doria dive. And that's understanding how that went and occurred and then finding out that she had paid money to go on the dive. That was my first indicator that something wasn't correct as far as the business model and that they were trying to circumvent things. So I initially, I think I brought this up to Scott and asked, Scott Griffith. And then asked him about the business model and what the plan was for income and for money coming into the company and how things were working and, you know, essentially trying to understand and make sure that, you know, everything was on the, the up and up. And I got various answers, you know. The most common one was, well, they're mission specialists. That term was used a lot and that's, they're paying members of the crew. Knowing that that, that didn't, as far as my understanding, that didn't, that didn't pass muster. That, that, that isn't the, you can't just change the title of a person when you're receiving compensation, right? I believe that you're only allowed to receive compensation up to cover certain expenses as far as the, the operating expenses of the vehicle directly. So I think I had dug into the, the regulations on that a little bit more. The CFR, it's 46 CFR, found the, I believe it's the Table 2 is in there, which outlined, outlined that any, any, there is no six-pack essentially operation for a submersible. So I had taken that and I emailed that to Neil McCurdy, who was the COO, and to Scott Griffith. And I was asking about, you know, how, how low are we doing this with, with the plan to take money for going to the Titanic? And, and what is the, you know, the, the operation here without having a certificate of inspection? That ended up leading to a, a couple of conversations between myself and Scott. And ended up with Scott taking me to lunch with Stockton over at the brewery on site there in Everett. And we had lunch and during that conversation, I brought up the, the concerns that I had regarding operating without a COI and not being inspected. He had a long list of issues and reasons why regarding, you know, the complication, the nobody want, you know, the, you know, it was stifling, the ingenuity and all these things. He tried to explain the mission specialist aspect to it. I talked about the receiving any sort of compensation aspect. He said that they were going to flag the Titan in the Bahamas and launch out of Canada so that they wouldn't fall under U.S. jurisdiction. I think I'd expressed to him that still taking U.S. passengers on there for hire, at any point in time, if they touch the U.S. land, you know, a U.S. port, that would also be of consideration. And it ended, the conversation basically ended when he, after explaining that the Coast Guard had tried to, I don't know, shut them down in, down in California and that he wouldn't operate there anymore. But that if the Coast Guard became a problem, that he would buy himself a congressman and make it go away.
Mr. McCoy, is that a direct quote?
He said I would buy a congressman and make, basically the problems would go away at that point in time. And that, that is direct. That will stand in my mind for the rest of time. I've never had anybody say that to me directly and I was aghast. And basically after that, I resigned from the company and I couldn't work there anymore.
I want to dig into your conversation.
Sure.
Do you remember, was anybody else there or was this you and Mr. Russ?
Scott Griffith was there at lunch.
How did you perceive the comment that he would buy a congressman? Did you, was it intimidating or did you feel it was more like bluster?
I felt like that he was trying to either intimidate me or impress me. That based off of his position and standing, that he would have the influence to tout the Coast Guard rules or he could, you know, make any problems that might arise go away. So at that point in time, I, I expressed to him, I said, I, you know, whatever your concerns are for, for him and his company, my concerns were, I said, I'm, I was still in the Coast Guard Reserve. And I was concerned that if I was to be part of anything that I felt was not correct and would be a violation of U.S. law, that, that would put me at jeopardy. And I felt like that I had a higher responsibility in, in following the law and that I felt like that I, you know, if the Coast Guard wanted to, I could be recalled and, and held accountable that way.
Was your understanding that if the Titan was flagged in the Bahamas and operated out of an international port in international waters, that that would be a violation of Coast Guard or U.S. law?
I wasn't sure at the time. And honestly, I, I still, if they, if it never came back to the United States, then my understanding is that I don't think that that would be, but I'm, I'm not sure. So, but it didn't sound like a, it sounded like it was more of an excuse for going forward or trying to just simply calm my fears. I didn't really believe it at that point in time.
And to clarify, did you not believe that he was going to flag the Titan in the Bahamas?
I didn't know if he was going to flag it in the Bahamas. I just didn't believe that he was never going to operate it out of the United States again. Well, I guess hadn't operated at that point in time, but was never going to operate out of, out of the U.S.
Was the Titan prototype or the first Titan hull being tested at that time in Puget Sound?
No, it, the plans, I believe, were to start testing around February. So this was late summer, so this was September of 2017. And so I believe the plans were to start testing in Puget Sound around 2018. And the, so they were still assembling it. So it had arrived on site. They, I believe shortly after it arrived, then they attached the titanium ends and then they started in, building out the interior of it. And that's, that's about where it was at when I left. I know that the end caps had arrived, but they had not been attached yet.
You mentioned that you resigned the following day from that, after that dinner?
Yeah, it was a lunch. I believe I gave my notice the following day.
Did you give an exit interview with anybody, sir?
I did. It was kind of an unofficial with Bonnie Carl. And she had pulled me aside as I was departing and had, was kind of doing, it wasn't something that I guess the company had asked for, it wasn't part of their normal policy. But as that she was overseeing the HR side, she was doing informal exit interviews with a lot of staff. She advised me that there had been a lot of turnover, so she was been digging in to try to figure out why the turnover was so high at the company.
Did you have any further discussions with your supervisor?
Just when I gave notice to, to Scott, that I told him that I couldn't be a part of that, that operation and my concerns for the legality of how it was operating.
Did he provide any response to that, sir?
No, throughout the, the whole process, Scott kind of just would echo what Stockton would say. So he didn't have a lot of, you know, he didn't really interject any of his own thoughts or opinions on that.
At the time, you would have been a reservist at Base Seattle? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Did you have a relationship with the sector individuals at that, at Puget Sound?
No, I did not.
I mean, by like marine inspectors or that department at Sector Puget Sound?
No, I, I did not know anybody over there at the time.
Did you make any notifications to the Coast Guard after this occurred?
No, I had considered whether or not I needed to notify the Coast Guard. At the time, they hadn't dove on Titan in the U.S., so they hadn't violated anything regarding Titan. My understanding was with the Andrea Doria, that was, you know, at my, at my point in time, and my understanding was a lot of hearsay from people and how, you know, that, you know, I, I don't think anybody at the company of, of management had told me that, you know, people had paid for it. I don't remember where that information came from. And that they were diving essentially for, but the term, you know, dive for hire, nobody really wanted to use that. So I didn't have a lot of like evidence per se that they were actively doing that. I initially kind of followed what was going on in the event that they did start diving. But David Lockridge had reached out to me about his, so not too much later, I guess that was in 2018, that he had left the company and that he had filed a complaint with OSHA. And so at that point in time, you know, I kind of assumed that it would go down that route and that OSHA and if it passed over to the Coast Guard would get involved. And a deeper investigation would occur. He did not ever notify me of the outcome of that. I've come, now I've come to find out that he was under an NDA and more other things. So I didn't know where it went from that. And eventually I just kind of quit following the company, not thinking that they would ever actually dive Titan.
And sir, you discussed your, your familiarity with the certificate of inspection requirements. Are you familiar with oceanographic research vessel designations that are provided by the Coast Guard?
I am not. I've never, I've never, I know that they exist, but I have never dealt with them.
Understand. At this time, I'd like to go to Lieutenant Commander Emmons for any questions?
Good morning, Mr. McCoy. I just had one question. You had mentioned Mr. Lockridge in the conversation you had after he departed the company. Did you ever have any conversations with him regarding safety concerns? Or did he ever have conversations with you regarding his safety concerns while you're both at the company?
Yeah, when I started at the company, there wasn't a lot of experience with anything to do with maritime operations. Pretty much when I started, it was, it was David and that was it. They made Scott, Scott Griffith was my boss. He came from the construction industry. It was very clear that he had no maritime experience. He had never operated on the oceans outside of some recreational stuff. And he'd never worked in the marine industry. worked in the marine industry. And then the other operations technician at the time was Ryan, Ryan Stockfleet. And he had not come from a maritime background at all. So initially learning some of the ways that they were operating and the things that they were doing was of concern to me. And I had, I had some concerns and regarding, you know, whether, how we were towing the Lars operation, things like that. And then that ended up developing over time. There was a lot of safety conversations when the, the first Cyclops two or the first Titan hull arrived. That was a constant conversation amongst most everybody, almost every day.
And what were those, some of those conversations?
So conversation being one was the size. And then as I think it's been attested to before, you know, the ends of it, as you looked in it, it didn't look like a very quality layup. There was a lot of conversations over how it was going to be tested. And I think that that came to, that it was going to be, Stockton was going to take it down himself. And it was interesting, it went really quickly from, oh, they had considered testing it out in Maryland at the ocean test facility there, but that with the cost would be prohibit, would be too expensive essentially. And so that Stockton would just take it down and dive it. Anytime that, you know, the idea of saying, well, why can't we just, you know, essentially put it on a cable and pull it down to the ocean floor if you want to test it unmanned, then that's a whole lot probably cheaper. You know, they just wasn't, wouldn't even be open to conversation about that. And so there was a lot of just concern overall, I think. The engineering department didn't seem overly qualified. So that was a concern for, they seemed to be handling all the design, especially once I kind of found out that the University of Washington really wasn't involved anymore and nor was Boeing. So you're looking for who, who is the qualified individual that's making these decisions? And it was really, you know, the, the engineering staff over there was Tony Nissen and then what, I think they had one or two other full-time folks. But everybody else was basically college interns during that summer while I was there. So it was pretty concerning over the qualifications for what they were attempting to do with that submarine.
Thank you, that's all I had, Mr. Newbauer.
Sir, Lieutenant Commander Whelan has a question.
Thank you, sir. Did you ever have any discussions with Mr. Rush or anybody at Ocean Gate regarding retired Rear Admiral Lockwood while you were there?
Yeah, so it came up at one point, I don't remember exactly when, that, so I learned that he was on the board and I don't remember where I had learned that. But there was a conversation, I don't remember if it was in passing specifically, but I think that Stockton was just trying to, basically it came up in conversation that they had been sharing information about the development and the design with the board. And I think that it was one of those conversations of trying to calm nerves and to say that, you know, Admiral Lockwood had, you know, they had done a brief and, you know, he'd even commented feedback on that the, he was concerned over the Lars design with having those air tanks exposed and towing it in the North Atlantic. But that was about all I had for a conversation regarding Admiral Lockwood. And so that was from, you know, in conversation with Stockton. I don't remember when that was, but that was the one thing that stood out about that. I didn't know much about Admiral Lockwood.
Thank you.
So I'd like to go to the climate, work climate at Ocean Gate during the time you were there. Were the senior personnel open to receiving feedback? It is interesting that you had meetings with your supervisor and the CEO of the company.
Yes, Stockton was in and out a lot. He didn't, my interactions with him directly, he seemed just, well, I, he seemed to be very defensive whenever anybody asked questions that were pointed. But other than that, so Neil McCurdy and Scott Griffith were both very easy to talk to. They would listen, but I feel like that there was a lot of just almost mouth piecing for Stockton and for what he was trying to accomplish. And so the one person that really took things serious was David Lockridge. You know, and it became very apparent that he was unhappy with the interactions going on. I know that he had no faith in the engineering department there, especially Tony. And the, you know, there were concerns. He started kind of filling me in, David Lockridge did, about how things went as I was, as we were talking about, once the Cyclops two arrived or the Titan hull one arrived and we were having these conversations over the hull and the viewport concerns were, were mentioned at the time and they were trying to, you know, and then we also had the two contractors that were, that worked there, Chris Eimes and Tim, can't remember Tim's last name all of a sudden, but they were both subcontractors for the company. So they would come in and out over, over that summer while I was there. And just talking to them, they had a lot of submersible experience, they had a lot of questions that didn't seem to be getting answered as well regarding the design, the build and what was occurring and how that was proceeding forward. So, and then the, I had started hearing some stories about Stockton's temper. That David had shared with me the story of the Andrea Doria dive and them getting stuck and the having to get out of that situation. And Stockton's kind of, his temper towards David having to take over. And that, that was also very concerning that he may have not have had the temperament to be doing this kind of work.
Did anyone else ever have concerns voiced to you about Mr. Rush's temper?
Not that I can remember. I mean, the only people that were really there at the time while I was there on the operations side were Scott, Griffith, Ryan, Stockfleet, myself, David. And then I think there was an intern she came through for a little while, Michaela Monroe or something like that. And then there was a, they hired on somebody right before I left and so, but other than that, they were very.
Was the conversation at lunch a heated discussion?
It became very tense. I felt very uncomfortable initially, just kind of laying it out, what my concerns were. I thought he'd be a little bit more receptive to it. And it was very quickly, you know, you could see the avoidance of, of, we're not, we're not taking passengers for hire kind of thing. And then as he shifted over to, to, well, we're going to flag it outside the US, it became a pretty tense conversation.
Did you clearly explain your background in the Coast Guard to Mr. Rush?
I think I had explained to him that I'd been a boarding officer in the Coast Guard and that, you know, my understanding and experience with, you know, vessels, you know, for passengers for hire and that, you know, I initially, when I started with the company too, I wasn't aware that submersibles didn't have a six passenger exemption for uninspected. So that was later. And then, excuse me, the, yeah, so I, you know, that, that specific information I'd found out while I was working there, but I explained it to him. He didn't seem to care.
And sir, before I go to the NTSB, we've been going for about 45 minutes. Would you just like to take a break?
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Muse?
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. McCoy. I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Commander Whelan?
Mr. McCoy, do you believe that Mr. Rush understood the regulations as they were in place at that time?
I absolutely do.
Do you know what a professional engineer is?
Yes.
And what is a professional engineer?
So a professional engineer is a person who has basically, they have to have a degree in their specialty field and then they work in, in the state of Washington, I believe it's a five-year program that they have to work under another professional engineer. And they have to meet a set of milestones. And basically at that time, then they become licensed as a professional engineer in that state that they are operating in.
And at the time that you were employed with Ocean Gate, was there a professional engineer that you were aware of on staff?
I don't believe so.
And in your employment now, you, I believe you work for a shipbuilding company?
I do.
Do they have a safety first policy or any type of employee safety policy?
They do.
And in the policy that you work with now, if you were to bring up a safety concern, what's the process for bringing up a safety concern?
So they have a, they have a director of safety or a safety manager at the company that oversees the entirety of the safety program. And then there is an entire safety department involved in that process. And then there's also through, and the safety manager answers directly to the CEO of the company. So there's not any of the other directors or vice presidents are in that chain. And then any complaints that are brought up or concerns are basically, are brought up and forwarded to that department and then investigated by that department who acts independently from the rest of the shipyard.
And was that similar to the same process as when you were with Ocean Gate?
No, it was, there was no formal, kind of a, outside of your normal chain, safety process. It was basically you, you would bring up your concerns directly to your supervisor and they would work their way up and they were always adjudicated somewhere up between your, whoever your director was and Stockton.
Was there a safety officer at Ocean Gate that you were aware of?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Fawcett?
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Did you retain copies of any emails between yourself and Ocean Gate related to your safety concerns?
I do not have any emails retained from 2017, no.
And then, did you, did you hear or see any communication regarding documenting or state registering the Titan?
No, I think I had brought, I had asked about that because they did have Washington numbers on, for the Antipodes and for Cyclops one. So they had WN numbers for those two. So those were clearly, and, you know, US flagged vessels. I believe I asked if that was the plan and I think that the answer was just no. And then it wasn't until lunch that they talked about, with Stockton, where he talked about flagging it in the Bahamas. That was the first time I'd heard that.
So as a Coast Guard boarding officer, if you saw a vessel that didn't have registration numbers in navigable waters of the United States, what action would you take?
Well, so they would not be allowed to operate. It would definitely be, at a minimum, it's going to be a citation written. You're going to, being that they're not allowed to operate in US waters, you're not going to allow them to continue their, their, their trip. So they're going to have to head home and be terminated and it would most likely be a citation. And then it would be entered into missile and tracked from there if they attempted to, I guess, try to operate further.
And that's the Coast Guard's database we've talked about here at great length?
Correct, yes. The marine information for safety and law enforcement, I believe.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. McCoy, during your time, your entire time in the Coast Guard, have you ever encountered a vessel that did not have a, either a US document, US flag or a state registration underway?
I had a, I did a boarding on a vessel, it was a sailboat that had conflicting information regarding, so it had been US documented, but the documentation had never been apparently transferred over to the new owner. So the, the bill of sale and all the information that said who the ownership was, so essentially at that point in time, I believe it was considered to be, we considered it to be undocumented vessel, being that it had not been transferred over. And he was cited for that.
And just to clarify, that would be an expired registration or documentation?
Correct, yes, yeah. So it had, it was a previously documented vessel at that point in time, the certificate of, sorry, the, yes, the certificate of documentation was, was no longer valid.
Are you aware of how the Coast Guard tracks recreational and commercial vessels in the missile database?
Yes, in the terms, if, if you're referring to, so by vessel name, you can search by VIN number and you could also search it by their state or their documentation number.
And by VIN, you mean vessel identification number?
Correct, yes.
And that would be the Coast Guard documentation number if federally documented?
Correct, yes.
From your experience, would it be hard to track a vessel in our database that was not registered or documented?
It would. It would probably need a, you would probably need some amplifying information in there. I would assume if it's going to be flagged in any country or any state, I believe it's common though that they would have to have affixed a VIN number to it or a vessel identification number to it. So if, otherwise it would just be, you know, if there's no VIN number, then it, that I would assume as a boarding officer that it's not flagged or documented.
During your time at Ocean Gate, approximately six months, are you aware of any operations at Ocean Gate conducted with the Antipodes or the Cyclops?
During my time there, it was all just test dives, so testing equipment and doing some training dives. So with Antipodes, we towed it out a few times just out there in Everett Harbor or it was just testing at the dock. The biggest thing for Antipodes at that point in time was that they were just making sure that they were keeping it up to date and because it had ABS class, I think that they did an ABS inspection on it that summer. So that was part of the reason why Tim had come up because you, Tim and Chris Eimes were, they helped a lot with the maintenance of Antipodes and Cyclops. And then Cyclops was just training and testing of various equipment. So, and that was all done there out in the harbor, just outside of, in Possession Sound, just outside of Everett. And that was for, they, that was when they actually installed the modem. So they were doing all like the text information. Prior to that, it was all voice communications through the, basically the underwater phone that was used.
Which submersible was that, sir?
It was on Cyclops one.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to go to Ocean Gate for any questions.
Sure, thank you. Mr. McCoy, you mentioned that you started at Ocean Gate in April 2017. When did you leave?
September of 2017.
Thank you. And Commander Whelan asked you about Admiral Lockwood. Did you have any conversations with Admiral Lockwood directly?
No, I never met him.
You, in response to Mr. Newbauer's question, you mentioned the dive operations with Antipodes and Cyclops just now. Did those involve any, anyone to your knowledge who paid to go on those dive operations?
No, I believe everybody that was, that was on the submersibles was all Ocean Gate staff.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, before we conclude with your testimony, I'd like to call a short recess to make sure we don't have any final questions for you, sir.
Sure.
The hearing is now back in session. At this time, does the board or Ocean Gate have any final questions for Mr. McCoy? Mr. McCoy, is there anything that I haven't asked or the board hasn't asked that would be of value to this investigation that you have?
I think we've covered most of my experience with Ocean Gate.
Thank you again, sir, for reaching out to the board during this proceeding. We appreciate you changing your schedule to be here today.
So that concludes the testimony of Matthew McCoy. And I have to say, for me at least, it delivered on what those few clips I had seen promised. So many things that have been said previously in this public hearing, which were obvious red flags, are reiterated here too. The name dropping of companies such as Boeing during the recruitment process, as well as the Applied Physics Lab, and then a sudden severing of connections with those companies and no concrete explanations given to those on the ground floor, either about why operations with those companies had ceased and also why other changes had been implemented, for example, the thickness of the hull, as is stated here. The disconnect from those at the top to those further down is something we've heard often, as well as accounts of Stockton Rush's temper, which itself was a factor in trying to relay any concerns or criticism to him. As we know, this could ultimately cost you your job. It has become clear just how much influence Stockton Rush had in pretty much every aspect of the company and anything that didn't align with his own path or could be a potential delay in getting Titan operating was greeted harshly. Critics of his methods included experts in the field. in the field, but as can be heard in the now released audio from the meeting where David Lockridge was fired, Stockton Rush thought he knew better than everyone else, and his ego, coupled with the pressure of investors' money, including his own, ultimately led to accepting paying passengers inside his experimental sub to try and prove it. And so it was no surprise, well, perhaps a little, to hear Mr. McCoy quote Stockton Rush as saying he would buy a congressman to make any future problems disappear regarding his sub operation. And once again, we heard about his frustration of how regulations were stifling his methods. Keeping on with the topic of Stockton Rush's ego, and I was actually speaking to somebody a while back about this, not only did he have experience in, as stated here, David Lockridge, and also Mr. McCoy himself had a lot of experience with Coast Guard procedure, which of course led him to questioning the Ocean Gate CEO about his concerns, but none of these valuable sources were ever truly listened to or anything they raised taken into account. And of course, Ocean Gate would go on to lose these vital people. Also, just on a human level, I myself would honestly not be able to sleep at night, knowing for example, there had been a shift in strain gauge data or very audible popping and crackling sounds, or there hadn't been enough testing to ensure safety, or there was no certification, or there had been countless problems with the sub, both technical failures but also actual physical impacts, such as the dome falling off or even the way the sub was hoisted up ramps or towed at sea in high waves that caused bearings to be stripped away, or many, many other things, such as experts in the field reaching out to voice concerns, or the doubts around the viewport, or that no scale model had successfully completed a test. There was just so much, and it would have made me nervous to even consider diving myself and risking my own life, let alone taking paying passengers. To me, Stockton Rush was gambling, and in the end, his gamble cost him and others their lives. I'm glad that Mr. McCoy reached out to the board and gave his testimony, as it also tied into other topics which have been discussed in previous ones, such as the Andrea Doria wreck dive, where Stockton Rush surrendered control of Cyclops one to David Lockridge after getting the sub stuck, and Renata Rojas's relationship with the company, who had been there from fairly early stages and even returned to volunteer his services on expeditions. In her own testimony, as with others who were still employed at Ocean Gate when the tragedy happened, she seemed protective and she even denied what David Lockridge said about that Andrea Doria dive, saying he must have been on a different dive. As they have overlapped, these testimonies have painted a much clearer picture in various areas in our unfolding understanding of this story. And I think this was an important one for sure, revisiting the toxic culture at the company, the ways and influence of Stockton Rush, the high turnover of staff, and the lack of experience in constructing such a critical product, one intended to protect human life. Anyway, I won't go on too long, as this testimony does pretty much speak for itself, but I do thank you very much for watching and sticking around this far. It is greatly appreciated. And I'll be back again soon with the next video. So until then, bye for now.